I would not want to see that happen.
No, I would not want to see that either, so.
The other basic necessities, the labs, the libraries, and that sort of thing. So we need to balance.
So we're going to double check those numbers.
Yes, thank you.
All right, and what is the timeline for this final proposal to be, to come to us?
I believe it'll happen, at least begin happening, in January.
Oh, all right.
And so, yeah, we'll be meeting with Mr. Reynolds in the next week or so to look at the comments and strategize and think about, you know, what the capacity realities are at different, different school sites. So that, you know, what we intended all along was that we came up with three initial options, and we intended that we probably would land on a fourth, after we take into account the different, you know, you know, seventy-five people are better thinkers than four, so.
Plan D.
Yeah, and we, but that was Plan A, so, so Plan B was always Plan A, so, because we knew that we would, we would learn a lot about concerns and interests, so.
Is the goal to get this in place for the next semester?
Mm-hmm. Yes, the goal would be to begin to implement this, you know, we could decide to do it in waves, but to start beginning to implement this, because as mentioned, MP Brown, Garden Village, and Tobias schools are all currently above the limit of capacity. Both Garden Village and Tobias have other programs operating out of their libraries, which we would like to cease, to not happen, and MP Brown is on the verge of making that same decision if, if something doesn't shift there.
All right.
Well, I will key onto what Rebecca, Rebecca said. There was some concern at Ben Franklin amongst some of the staff that they would be losing their science lab, and we really want, don't want to lose something as valuable as that that we should be building on to make it even better than it is, rather than not having it. So it's really important that we're going to make, when we make this decision, that we're doing the shifts and stuff, so that it will accommodate, that we keep what we have, and just have to have the space. I don't want to say what has to be moved or not moved, but it's my understanding, we have a big section, probably a couple of rooms, that is with special ed, and we might want to determine whether or not they ought to be housed in, say, the district office or something. It's not just about, just doing the sixth grade, I think it's everything that we have to look at as a whole picture. What's, what's best way is this district going to run, that's not going to impact that we're not going to have class, classes for our students that are there. We're hoping that if we do something like this, and we're having more students, sixth grade students at the middle schools, that that will increase having more electives. We can't have the elective programs if we don't have the classrooms for it. So I think we have to, it's a bigger plan than just saying, let's get these kids out of the school, and put them over at middle school, let's make sure that the plan is going to work, and I think Hans has always been, along with me, saying we want some of those electives that will interest the students to join and work in, in different fields, with, with CHOP or whatever would entice some of the young men, so that perhaps that would be something that they would develop as a career later on, and get their interests now. As we all know, if children are interested in doing music, art, or any other type of extra elective job, programs, they usually will do better in academics, because there's something that's making them really feel good about what they're doing, and they will do better. So I hope that we don't rush it too much, or let's make sure that we, from now until January, February, that we explore everything possible. So I just want to make sure I said that. The other thing I wanted to mention, though, was I did attend one of the community meetings, and unfortunately, there were like two or three people there. One happened to be a teacher, who was a PTA president on top of that, lovely, someone you know dearly and love, his daughter-in-law, and, and she had some concerns, but I was really kind of taken back by not having more participants of the parents, and I wonder, are they fully aware what's going on, or is it just something they read and maybe quite didn't understand what it was? But I just couldn't believe that we didn't have enough parents there. So while you say seventy-five people, I think the big amount were at Tobias, right? That was the largest attendance.
I would say probably half of those people were.
And Ben Franklin also had a very large attendance.
Well, I was going to ask that question.
From a variety of schools, from a variety of local, theater schools.
Westlake had a great turnout, too.
Was it?
Yeah.
No, Westlake had a turnout at Ben Franklin.
Westlake did not, I was there.
Westlake had a good turnout at Ben Franklin.
Oh, at Ben Franklin, okay.
Yes, that's where the parents showed up, yes.
Okay, because when I was at Westlake, there wasn't, but I just want to be sure that everybody is totally, totally informed of what this whole thing is, maybe they're lost with all same configuration, or.
Yeah, and I, you know, we did advertise this widely, I think what's occurred is that both at MP Brown and at Woodrow Wilson, there's been a lot of conversation over the last three years about K-5, 6-8, and I think most of the parents at those schools, from my understanding, are comfortable with that, because it has been at least a three-year conversation for most of them.
What I heard was that the time of the, a meeting was too early for the children, so I just want to make sure that we, we do all we can, and I think we need to promote Ben Franklin School, all the good things that are at that school, so that any of the parents will not feel like, you know, they, they need a choice, that they might want to go there, so whatever we can do to really publicize what good things are happening at Ben Franklin.
That's a good point.
That would be really better, that the parents will feel better about attending. So if we could kind of work on PR for that, that would be great. Okay, enough.
All right. All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
CSBA Annual Conference. Yeah, oh, sorry about that, yeah, we went overtime, so the first one is, so the first speaker is Darrell Fountain on this item.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Darrell Fountain, I'm a parent of a first grader at Westlake Elementary School. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend any of the meetings held previously at any of the campuses due to my other work schedule, but I have with me a petition of one hundred and fifty signatures of Westlake parents, and I'd just like to read a brief statement, if that's okay. "To Jefferson Elementary School Board and the Administration Office, Westlake School would like to continue the opportunity to have a choice of going to Westlake School for sixth grade. The parents here feel that Westlake School houses a top-notch sixth-grade program. It builds confident, capable students. The sixth-grade students are team players ready for leadership positions in student government such as president, vice president, and secretary of Westlake School. Sixth graders here are also the role models of the school. They model the outstanding behaviors of model citizens that younger grade children aspire to be. Please consider keeping the sixth-grade option to stay at Westlake School available to the Westlake School parents. Thank you."
Thank you. How many, um, parents did you say?
One hundred and fifty signatures.
All right.
Thanks.
Hi, thank you for hearing me out, and thank you very much for speaking in regards to the classrooms at Ben Franklin. I'm a teacher at Ben Franklin, and I've been teaching science there for over twenty years. Our science program is a very, very good program, and we are very, very much involved with the rigor of science, and my goal has always been, as has been my colleagues, to make the students high school-ready. That's what our aim is, is for these kids to be able to go into high school and be able to really understand the concepts that they need to be successful in high school, and in particular, high school science. And I appreciate very much you bringing up the idea of the possibility, and I know it's just a possibility now, of our lab possibly being taken away, along with the computer lab, and several other classrooms that are really in use and very high need at our school. One of the other options that I heard, though, was that we won't take your lab away, but there's a possibility that you'll have to share that as a classroom. In other words, it might be looked at as a classroom, and then possibly, if I wanted to go in that lab, that teacher that was in that room as a classroom, and then my class would have to switch, those kids would move room to room. I don't understand how that could work, I personally think that that would be disastrous, and when I talk to other middle school teachers who have had to do that, it's not been very successful, and because of that, they reduced their amount of labs that they do. It's just too complicated, materials get lost, broken, et cetera, so it's not been a very good option for that either. So I also wanted to advocate that, that while there's, there's talk of, we won't take your lab away, that's, but possibly we might turn into a classroom, and then you can share that room, I really don't see that as being a plausible solution to our problem. If our new standards are to be striving for excellence and to be of high rigor, we really want to get in there and use that lab, and make sure that those kids are definitely high school-ready, so I wanted to mention that, and I also was concerned with the possibility of these extra sixth graders coming in. While I, I understand the idea's a good one, I'm concerned about the traffic issues, dropping those kids off, picking those kids up, parking issues, safety issues, and quite frankly, bathroom issues, that's something else that's been coming up quite a bit, too. So there's a lot of other things that I think have to really be investigated and looked into, as you said before, just bringing this in, because on the surface, it may not seem like such a very hard move to make, but in reality, there's an awful lot that's going in there as far as overcrowding our school, and making sure that those kids are safe, and that we as teachers can give the highest quality education to these kids as we possibly can, to make them ready for high school. So thank you very much for acknowledging what you did acknowledge, and I wanted to also bring up the potential option of sharing that room as not being a very viable option as well. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Melinda Dart.
Yes. Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. The teachers of 3267 have, have often thought that moving impacted schools where overcrowding causes split grades, and, and, and libraries to be taken over by classes. We have believed that the best move was to put sixth grade into the middle schools, also in order to offer sixth graders a full program, a full period of PE, full library experience, and full electives, which is not to say that, that I, that I would be against any choices or alternatives, but I think in the impacted schools, that makes sense. We do have all sixth graders going to middle school on the east side of town, and if it can be done there, I think it can be done on the west side, too. But that being said, I would think that Ben Franklin should be given every chance to make itself attractive and vital, and a sought-after place to be, and that definitely would not mean taking away something like a, a science lab, or, but, or perhaps other things there. I think the staff should have input into the decisions of how the, you know, the classrooms are chosen, there, when some, when special ed was mentioned, that is not, we're not talking about classrooms of special ed, that is an office for special ed, and there are very few people using that office, and it is a very big space. So it would seem to me really wrong to move students out of a lab, and yet continue to have a large office full, not full, but with a couple of administrators in it. So I would really suggest looking at that. There's also an empty room where meetings are held, and it's a great room to do professional development and have meetings in it, but the school should exist for the needs of the students, not the needs of, of the, the adults that need to do professional development. We should get, we should have another place for that. Not get a new building, but just go to the district office like we usually do, I think. So I'm, I, I really want to stress, though, that we want to build up the middle school, we want them to be desirable places to be, we want to keep, we, we should have a science lab in, in every middle school, and we should have them in the elementaries, too, right? We, we really want to increase the exposure to, you know, enrichment and to rigorous problem-solving, common core lessons of the future in science, and so we don't want to take away any kind of opportunities like that for the students. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So listening to everyone, it sounds like there's two issues. One issue is amount of space, but it seems like the utilization of the space is actually more important than the amount of space, so I'm just curious, how is the final decision made on how the space is going to be utilized? Is that the principle, is it?
Us, yes.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is it us, is it the administrators here, or?
Yeah. So the, the actual space to be used is a conversation between district administrators, site administrators, and school staffs. The, the general plan is a board decision, and we provide as much detail as we can to that decision. And I have had conversations with, with middle school principals, and I've had a conversation with elementary school principals who want to have libraries back.
Right, right.
And, you know, there, there's no need to take away a science lab, but, you know, in the spirit of transparency, it is one of the classrooms that shows up as, as a vacant space at the school. However, you know, there's, there are other spaces that could be utilized, so.
All right.
I'm glad we're having this discussion, because I think a lot of good ideas have drawn, been brought up, and it only gives the administration more things to think about and come back with a plan.
Right, but I just don't want people to have the wrong perception that it wasn't a collaborative process, so it sounds like to me that there is still a collaborative process.
Yeah, and, and really, there has not been a decision that's been made.
Right, that's what.
So, so I, I know that several folks believe that a decision's been made, there's just.
Science lab is.
There's a movement to, to make certain decisions, just because the need exists, and, and we're about to explode at some elementary sites.
Right.
But there, there's, you know, the board, that's the board's decision, and that's why we started these community meetings, and that's why we're going to take a look at the input, and we're going to craft a recommendation that aims to take into account most of the, I'm not saying we can take into account a hundred percent, but most of the concerns, at least the largest ones.
All right. So it sounds like unanimous consent that everyone here, here supports science and science labs, and that that's not, shouldn't be a big issue right now, all right.
Okay, and the other thing, I want to thank Melinda for expanding on what I said, because it might have sounded like I said take out special ed classes, but it's the office, and I think we need to look at, and I didn't realize until you said about the extra classroom, that's for meetings, I think we need to say, let's look at the space we have at schools, to make it work for the students properly, and still help us with the overcrowding, and then once we are making the school appealing, I think we won't have problems with some of the folks wanting to attend the school, but it's got to be something that we are going to make it, that they want to do this. We've got to make everybody as happy as we possibly can, and look at the places that we have, if there's any way that things can be moved, that are not for children, that they can be, we have a huge district office, and the back is being rented out. Maybe it's time we take that back somewhere along the line.
We will, we will continue to look at all of those spaces, and, yes, of course.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks once again, Mr. Reynolds. CSBA Annual Conference.
Yes, and so at the August fourteenth meeting, the board approved three members to attend CSBA, but wished to wait until after the election to determine who would be able and willing to go. I have spoken to Mr. Waters, and he has indicated he is not able to attend for those three days, so we're still, you know, I'm still, so this is an opportunity for the board to decide which, up to three school board members would like to attend and able to attend.
I'm able to attend.
All right, any deliberation, I guess, there's only.
Rebecca, would you be able to go?
I would, I would certainly be willing, able, and, and probably eager to attend.
Okay, because that.
Just lots to learn.
Yeah.
I'm definitely planning on going.
Okay, there's the three.
All right, so, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that, that we send Rebecca Douglas, Shakil Ali, and Marie Persuela to attend the CSBA Annual Conference.
Along with Mr. Vidalis.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm already there.
He's already, he gets to go.
I know he's not here tonight, but what about Mr. O'Teedy? Do we want to consider, or do we know what he, what his availability or desire or need is?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
His, he's been absent.
A lot.
A lot, and I don't think he's feeling all that great, but it's up to you, do you want to wait?
It would be great, I mean, we should decide today, because the deadlines are, I think, there's one today, and there's another one like in a couple of days.
Right, okay.
So, what I wouldn't, well, this motion's been made, so you can vote, and then you can, I will make one more announcement.
Do we have a second?
I will second that, then.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So what I, what I would like, if by tomorrow, if those three of you that, that are going, if you would indicate to Ms. Kovarai, if you were interested in attending any of the Wednesday sessions, it's a, it's a full day before, and then we can make a flight arrangements to leave on early Wednesday morning.
Okay.
Or else, if you're not interested in any of that, it would be a Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday evening flight, so if you could get that to Ms. Kovarai by noon, that would be great. I think all of you have.
Last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we think we left like at six or something, six fifteen.
Yes, and got in about.
Anyway, so if you, I think you all have mailed to you the, the conference catalog, so you can get a sense of those Wednesday sessions. If you don't, call Ms. Kovarai, we can scan one for you and send it to you.
All right.
So.
That's done.
And I, I just mentioned to Mr. Waters, there is a session for new board members that's held locally at the county level, and it's free, and that gives you a nice overview of everything, which is great, if you're able to attend that time.
Yeah.
So, maybe, did, he already get it? Oh, good, okay.
Call for nominations for CSBA Delegate Assembly.
Yes, and this is mostly an information item, because we don't have any of the backup material, but just wanted to let you know that CSBA is calling for nominations for Delegate Assembly. If you would like to make a nomination, the, in the backup material, the forms that need to be filled out for us to consider, for the board to consider, who to nominate, you know, so that would need to be filled out, and we will, if, if I, if I can have that information by December first, it will be in time to place it on the December eleventh agenda. So if you know of someone that you would like to nominate, we can nominate up to three, but we can consider more. We can do that at the December eleventh meeting. So if those could be, if you can approach who you'd like to nominate, and get their consent, and, and have all of the backup forms completed, they will be considered at the December eleventh meeting, because it's a January seventh deadline, and we don't meet again until after that.
Okay.
All right, any discussion on this? All right. So the, we're not voting right now.
No.
We're taking no action.
No, no.
It says D on there, no?
Yeah, just in case you were ready to vote, but I don't, there was, there was the information.
All right. Curriculum and instruction, acceptance of donations, we'd like to thank Dee Leah Rousher and the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Philanthropic Ventures Foundation, Ms. Penny Pothoff.
Honda of Redwood City, too.
Honda of Redwood City, Penny Pothoff, Ms. Nicole Collette, Ms. Nah Leguan, and Ms. Nicole Collette again, the Thomas Edison PTO, PG&E Foundation, Rachel Tomulovich, Brooke Waters Ames. Wow, there's a lot of people here.
I know.
Calvin Louie Choi Denzel Santiago, Karen Hernandez, Anonymous, Carla Avalos Cruz, Gabriel Alvarez, Mira Angela Dabalos, Matthew Morales, Rosalie Tan, Lindsay Nikki Marie Villarine, Shing Chang Lee, Serena Isabel Ochoa, Carolyn Enriquez Morones, Kate Illumin, Glania Carol Reyes, Carlos Ungo, Diane Chow, Jordan Marcus Gandinko, Jethir Galimlim, CJ Batikin, and Cassandra Camille. Thanks for donating to our school district. That was really good.
Yeah. I would, I would like to make a motion that we accept those donations with thanks.
Did you practice that?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I apologize if I butchered anything.
Yeah, I was going to say, we don't know, we don't know yet, do we?
It sounded better than any of them.
Sounded very, sounded very good.
All right, and we'll keep moving.
We're to four-four now.
Oh, did I skip something?
No.
All right. Salary schedules for Director of Maintenance and Operations, and General Manager Food Service Operations.
So the governing board does annually approve salary schedules for district employees, which we did most of back in October ninth, however, there were two classes that were left out. Those classes are not currently occupied by anyone, but if someone is going to be working out of class in them, or if we end up hiring back into that position, we kind of need to keep that current. So we do recommend approval of the salary schedules for Director of Maintenance and Operations, and General Manager Food Service Operations for thirteen, 2013-14.
I'm a little bit confused, what, so, why don't we have those positions filled?
Well, currently, Director of Maintenance and Operations is slash Bond Manager, so Mr. Young is in that position, but there's also a position without the Bond Manager part that exists, and then the Food Service Operations, we are working with Aramark at this point, so we have not had a General Manager that's a district employee.
So that's not, that position's not in existence right now?
It's not filled.
I thought we didn't, we get away with that, because it's contracted.
We did not eliminate the position, the positions in existence, it's not filled currently, because it is contracted. And, and there is, back, I forget how many years ago, but there was a, a creation of, what is it called, assistant, food service.
Right, or production assistant.
A production assistant, that we felt at that point filled the district's needs together with the contracted employees from Aramark. So, but that position still exists, it was never eliminated as a position?
Well, I didn't mean to say that we eliminated, but we, there's no need to fill this job.
So this, we're not allocating any money, we're just.
We're just, we're just progressing the salary schedule.
So that we don't have to create one later on.
To keep in line with all the other ones, and, and they were inadvertently left off.
Right.
You know, it just keeps it up, it should have been, everybody should have moved at the same time, filled and unfilled.
Oh, all right.
But this is, this doesn't, this isn't placed in our, in our budget at all, then?
No.
Okay, so the question I have is on, you say the position's not, it's not filled, but yet there's somebody in the job, which we know it's like working out of class, right? They work out of class to fill the job.
Not necessarily, it, it doesn't exist, I mean.
No, I'm not, not talking about the, I'm talking about the maintenance one.
Occasionally, when Mr. Young is occupied with other duties, or he's on vacation, or, you know, we do have folks who need to work out of class, yes.
Yeah, okay, so, they, they're, my question is, are they placed on step one?
I believe they are placed on step one. I can't answer it completely, but I'm assuming that, okay, because I just want to make sure that if they're here like a long time, you don't just put them on another step.
No, and no one would be placed on step five, okay, okay.
One last question, is the purpose of keeping the positions there because it's hard to create a position later on, or what? I mean, why are we doing?
Yes.
All right.
Sometimes, some, and, you know, we don't know what the needs of the district will be in four or five years, and so rather than eliminate a position, we keep them there, because we may decide at some future point that we're not going to contract out, we're going to, we're going to take back our food service operations, and so, to keep that, so.
Here's another question.
And when we're all done with bonds, you know, we just go back to, to, just the Director of Maintenance and Operations.
So, and they are still actually there, whether this was approved or not, it's just that with the six percent increase, since there hadn't been one for five years.
So this already got the six percent increase already?
It already hasn't, it's so that it's, that's brought up with the others.
So the question is this, that you, you made steps because they didn't have it, or you increased the steps with the six percent?
We, this, for this particular thing, this is just increasing, adding six percent to what was there before.
So they've always had five steps before?
Ah.
Because you made it sound like we're just giving them five steps.
No, no, so here, the.
So make sure.
No, no, and, and like Ms. Kessler said, the primary reason that we do this with board action every year now, is we've been advised by our auditors and our council, there's been an increase in Calpers and Calsters audits of retired employees, and if there is no formal action to increase salary schedule. is no formal action to increase salary schedules and salaries, then many folks, not in our school district, but in other school districts, have been asked to pay back retirement. So we've just made it a point to annually now start approving all salary schedules so that there's always a record, a recent record of the last time the board approved the salary schedule.
So all the salary schedules that we already approved showed the 6% increase, and they have five steps, and this is just the same thing that just wasn't done.
Left off.
Right.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the salary schedules. Second.
Present it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks for answering all our questions. So we have some retirement, well, loan retirement.
Yes, we do. We recommend you approve the retirement of Jean Wood, Food Service Assistant, effective at the end of this year, in December, and we do request an appropriate resolution be prepared. She's worked with the district since November 1987.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the retirement of Jean Wood, effective December 30th, 2013, and that an appropriate resolution be prepared commending her for her many years of service to the district.
All right.
I'm always tempted to say, well, you know, actually, we like having you around, so I don't keep wanting to approve, but no, I will second that motion and wish her the best in retirement.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know, one time we voted no on somebody, I forget who it was, I think Hans was there. We said, oh, just.
Yeah, but we did it with smiles and gave in.
It happens, it happens anyway.
You can't chain them to their desk.
I know, I know.
It's just a record for their auditors when they come and audit retirement records. Board also approved their retirement at a certain date.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, thanks, Ms. Wood. All right, now we have a resignation.
Yes, this person is resigning for the purpose of retirement, Leonora Lopez, After-School Program Assistant at John F. Kennedy School, and that's effective January 17th of next year, and we'd like to prepare a letter of commendation for her years of service, and she's worked with us since October of 2000.
Is there?
What's the difference? Oh, you're going to say the same thing as me?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What's the difference between?
A letter and a resolution.
It's the format of it more than anything. I mean, this person is not, she's not part of the official retirement system.
All right, all right.
But she gets a special letter for her services.
But she works.
That's good.
Okay.
Yeah, we're taking care of her.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion, then, that we accept the resignation of Leonora Lopez, EDC Program Assistant from JFK, and wish her also all the best in retirement with the appropriate letter of commendation for her years of service.
Say it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
She's worked 14 years. Yeah.
Administrative Regulations, BP 0420.4, Charter School Authorization, BPAR 1114, District Sponsored Social Media, and 9320, Meeting and Notices, November 2012, Board Policy Revision, Second Reading.
So we've had these now for a couple of months, probably, so if there are any questions on these or thoughts, interesting, we included the Charter School Authorization with this packet because there were other Charter School policies here, so we thought we'd do it all together. District Sponsored Social Media, as I mentioned last time, the district is not in a place where we're going to be sponsoring any social media outlets, because we don't have the capacity or the staff to monitor it. However, there are school sites that are engaging in this and want to, and so we thought it behooves us as a district to provide guidance for school sites for how to manage their social media platforms. And then the meeting notices and agendas, we just thought we would update that to include some provisions for if the board wanted to limit the number of meetings they had in the summertime, we have that option as well.
All right.
And then there's the whole November 2012 update.
Right. So the, I'm trying to figure out, because I remember I didn't look at much of it the first time you sent it to us, but are there additions to what we got before?
There are no additions. This is exactly the same packet that you received.
Okay, misunderstood what you said. I wanted to go to AR 4161.2, and I noticed when we talk about bereavement leave in the middle of the page, it refers to described in collective bargaining agreement.
Correct.
Is that because sometimes it changes, that you don't want to put it here and then change it again?
Yes, and the collective bargaining agreement is more dynamic and is more subject to quickly change, and so we figured we would just refer to that, and then that gets approved by the board, you know, at the conclusion of collective bargaining, so.
So would it be appropriate to put that language someplace in this so that when someone looks it up, they'll see what it is instead of having to go dig out, where is the collective bargaining agreement? I understand the purpose of keeping it like this, but we review this like every year, don't we?
Not every policy, it seems like it, but at least the last couple of years it has.
If it changed, if the collective bargaining agreement changes, then we would go back and change this.
Not the way that it is, that it's written now. The way that it's written now, the collective bargaining agreement can change, but we don't need to go back to the policies. And so what happens is, we don't often know what's not, as we're starting to update them, we're starting to make clear that information that is addressed in both the collective bargaining agreement and the board policies, that it refers to the collective bargaining agreement, because that is the one that's reviewed and used mostly by employees, when they need to know about the types of leave, that they can take the look at their agreement, and board policy exists as, you know, as a legal backup for, that we have a policy on these things, and we can refer to collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, I understand all that, but I just felt like it should be something in here that we can see, but that's fine, I'm just bringing it up. I know that we go along with what the collective bargaining agreement is, but it just seems to me it should be, consider this to be our book, I just thought it should be there.
Yeah, if, for some reason, the collective bargaining agreement changes, I don't know off the top of my head which of those agreements or changes are referred to in board policy, and it's not until somebody says, hey, there's a discrepancy, and always a collective bargaining agreement takes precedence over board policy, unless it's illegal.
So essentially, this keeps the, it actually keeps things tidier and more, less likely to have discrepancies and errors in it.
Yeah, well.
By not trying to duplicate something that's a gazillion intended.
I got it, I got it. It's just an easy way not to keep having to go back to it.
I would like to move that we approve the board policies, administrative regulations.
I have a question on another one. AR 5113, isn't that what we're here to discuss this? Okay.
Could you repeat that again?
Okay, AR 5113.1B.
Okay.
And it says Superintendent or designate, shall designate the school administrator or administrators as a supervisor of attendance and assistant supervisors necessary, okay, to approve this. I wanted to know what change, what change has been made on this, other than you'll designate who the administrator is?
The way that the board policy came to us, it described a separate student attendance monitor or administrator manager, and we don't have that position in our school district, and so that position is served by our school principals or assistant principals.
Okay, because it couldn't see what came out and what went in that was different. And I think that was only one more other one. I think that was it. Thank you very much for letting me ask the questions. Okay, go ahead, Hans.
Try again.
Do it now.
All right, I make the motion that we approve the board policies, administrative regulations.
I'll second that.
Of the board, okay, go ahead.
I'll second that.
I was going to read them off with the.
No, no, save your breath.
As listed.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Comments from any board member? All right.
Just show up.
We're going to hold you down and not let you use honor. Retire. But I don't write Into the Sunset until December 11th.
Right.
That's true.
I have nothing further to say.
I just, I think when we talked earlier, we forgot to mention that some of us went to the partnership meeting, which was very, very, it was really a good meeting.
Redwood City Partnership, yeah.
Yeah, Peninsula Partnership, and a lot of our employees, you know, members of staff was there, it was great, and a lot of good information.
All right. Thanks to everyone for coming out. Persons wishing to address the board, we have no speaker cards, so we will adjourn the meeting.
You need to.
In memory of William Schumacher, and also the thousands of victims of Hurricane Hayan in the Philippines. So we'll have a moment of silence.